I'm going to excuse for the evening, Kim Dickerson, she's out of town. Both Tom Hansen and Tyler Bluth will be a few more minutes late and have asked us to begin. We're happy to have Cory and Mary Ann with us and they've asked me to just go ahead and conduct conduct the study session at this point. So we're going to go ahead and get started. I want to outline what we'd like to get accomplished. We're going to start with Valerie from GSBS to give us an update on our future schools project. I believe Lindsay Ferrari will be joining us on Zoom as well. Kirsta will be helping with that. Once we have our GSBS update, which should be in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty minutes, then we'll move to a school site that we've been working on for some time in the Sawmill subdivision. And we have Mr. Ryan Pullman and Brian Berg here. Gentlemen that are developers in that area and that we've been working with to secure their school site. So that should also take, you know, not more than fifteen minutes. And then we'll move forward if it's the board's wishes to take action during the board meeting, the regular, the regular board meeting on the school site. Item number three, for those of you that have an agenda, we're going to move that to January. We're going to move that, that item from Dr. Eric Campbell in January. And we do have a, we do have a teacher that contacted us and wanted to provide lunch or provide dinner for the board this evening. A little bit of an appreciation dinner and we're kind of, we're honored that she would like to do so. And so we're going to, we're going to end study session a little early tonight by five forty-five, we hope, so that we can move across the hall. And I believe Tom and Tyler will be here by then. And instead of, well, our, so our board dinner tonight will be sponsored by a teacher that's actually making dinner for the board. And then we'll come back in at six thirty for the regularly scheduled meeting, so. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn some time over to Valerie. Please take a seat with us up here at the table, Valerie.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hopefully I can drive down. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. We've got just another PowerPoint. And I will, I think we can do this in a minute. I think there are fifteen slides, so we'll see.
Whoops, I didn't even take, sorry, I put Lindsay up.
There's Lindsay.
Oh, Lindsay.
They're going to put a PowerPoint up instead. Sorry. Sorry, Stacy. I'm going to put you over here.
Okay, all right.
Oh, that hurt. Can you do that little soft there?
She's trying to make it real. Okay, let's go to the next slide. All right, so this is, I wish you could read everything, but it's a little bit small. There we go. This is a timeline. So we put our, we had kind of blocky schedule into more of a linear timeline that just kind of helps you see where we are in the process. So you can see that we are here balloon. That's where we are today at the December board meeting. We had our second educator workshop on Tuesday. Those are the purple circles. And we are going to have our third and final one, January eleventh. And then we're going to have our second communities steering committee meeting end of January, our second advisory committee meeting end of January. And we've got a whole flurry of community meetings that are going to happen in January. And I'll talk about those in a few minutes. And then you'll see on that timeline, a long stretch of no bubbles. So that's work time. So we'll be ending the information gathering phase at the end of January. And then we'll have all kinds of information to sort through and start to synthesize. And we'll be working on putting together options during that time in anticipation of coming back to the public and presenting the options and getting, getting feedback on priorities. And ultimately, we're aiming then to have a public open house in April and present the draft master plan to the board in April twenty first. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So some of the feedback we got, I think in this meeting in November and then in the committee meetings leading up to it was that the people on the committees and the principals and everybody really needed some information that they could share with their, with whoever was asking them questions. So we developed what we're calling the One Sheet. And it's really just a one-page description of the master plan. It starts with why are we doing this? Why is the district doing this? Now what's a master plan? Talking through the process with some little icons that are sort of helpful to visualize. And then the bottom is, you know, talks about how people can participate. So, and it goes through and lists a series of community meetings that are coming up at the elementary schools. And the one page is, one side is in English, one side is in Spanish if you were to print it. And it's two-page or email it. And I think all the board members have it now. We are updating with dates and times as they become solidified and changed. And we've given this out to the different committees. So hopefully that's helpful to people. Let's go to the next page. Okay, yeah, zoom out. So we're going to focus tonight on the educator workshops. We've had two of them and they've been really good so far. We've had good participation. We, I think, invited thirty-one or thirty-two educators and they represent all the different schools. And we've had, they haven't all come and they're not all able to come to each one, but we've had good attendance. I think we had about twenty, maybe a little over twenty on Tuesday. So in the first workshop, we asked three questions. How do your facilities support the educational programs offered at your schools? How could the learning environments and support spaces better support your mission as a teacher? And how could the learning environments better engage and support your students? So let's go to the next slide. And we, we have used kind of table group format. The elementary school teachers sit together, the middle school teachers sit together, the high school teachers sit together. And in the first workshop, they were really discussing amongst themselves and then reporting out to the larger groups.
Sorry, I can't see where she has it on here.
Oh, there are little arrows on top.
Right above, right above workshop where it says four out of sixty or fifty.
It's a whole different page on here.
Yeah.
And I tried using the arrow.
Okay, sorry.
You're the one that usually.
Maybe a little scroll bar on the side.
I think it is scrolling down. I think the PDF has more image below. So go back to the PDF viewer.
Yeah, maybe go to full screen.
And scroll down. It might be below it.
I can't do anything.
See even the slide bar on the far right? See the little black?
Oh, one of them.
So if you can zoom out so we can see the whole slide, I think that'll be helpful. I'm not going to read through these, but we transcribed the, we transcribed the notes. So each table group took notes on big flip charts and we transcribed it here pretty much verbatim. Oh, go to, so there, can you go back to, yeah, go back one more slide? Yeah, and zoom out if you can to full screen.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got the elementary teacher comments in orange, the middle school in blue, the high school in green. And you can see for this question, there were some pluses and some minuses about how the current facilities support the educational programs offered. And we put little pluses and minuses there. And, you know, we've got some gray, you know, quotes in gray. We have outgrown our schools exclamation point was one of the comments that they made. Let's go to the next slide. One of, you know, one of the things that they, the high school teachers talk about is that the faculty is so large now that they don't all know each other anymore. So they go to faculty meetings and they don't necessarily know the other people, all the other people in the faculty meetings. Let's go to the third page. I've got a couple of slides that start to talk about the emerging themes. And they, of course, also are doing the best we can with what we have. Up to the next slide. So we went through these and really there was a lot discussed, but there were very much common themes across the different schools. And, and so we have pulled those and we are using those as we move forward. So I'm going to read through these. The first one was that technology is available, is the technology availability and use is a real strength in this district and that's across the board. And they do talk about needing more infrastructure to keep all the devices charged. And in some places, maybe needing some audio visual equipment enhancements in order to use some of the large spaces for AV. Class sizes are too large. We heard that across the boards. And the teachers talk a lot about how large classes negatively impact the student-teacher relationships, classroom management, organization, and really overall wellness for the students and teachers. They talked about the schools feeling too large, the school, school populations. Large schools requiring large faculties make it difficult for teachers to know each other and to develop relationships that benefit the students. Classroom ownership came up. This was a topic amongst the middle school and high school teachers. That some of them roam from class to class rather than being situated in the same classroom all day. That's, you know, that's done in some schools for efficiency so that the classrooms are used one hundred percent of the time. But it's not, not the preference of the teachers to do that. They don't feel like they do their best work or they have their tools and all their visuals and everything available to them. So the next one was small groups. And we heard this a lot with the elementary school teachers, but really with all the groups. That there aren't enough small group spaces for pullouts, for special services. That they really need some programs, small group space in the schools. That they're not using hallways and vestibules and kind of ad hoc spaces. And then teachers need collaboration space for planning, teaming, and coaching. And the proximity is important for teacher collaboration within grade levels, especially at the elementary schools or within the departments at the middle and high schools. Okay, next slide.
So those are, you know, that's an interesting point because that's, that's the space that gets sucked up at the beginning of the growth process. And, you know, case in point is each of the academic wings of the current high school had collaboration spaces at the end of each wing. And, you know, it's been probably, what, three years ago or four years ago, we had no choice. We had to pull the trigger and remodel them into, into small classrooms. And so that collaboration space and space for pullouts. And same thing, the study, the study hall, the study rooms in the library are now being used for, for offices, for teachers, for, for other types of providers that we now have. And so that was one thing we heard from the, from the students was we need, we need more spaces in the school just to sit down somewhere and study and get with a group of kids or whether it's in the hallways or the commons area, which typically there is some of that in a school. But our current, our current situation is that stuff is all, is all kind of gobbled up for other, other uses. Rather be for teachers or, or just students. If you've been in the commons of the high school, you know, the idea that some, that kids could move around or maybe we could have some tables that they could gather around, it's just, it's all out the window at this point. It's so crowded with just our, with just the bodies of the, of the students.
All right, so the next one was.
You're doing great on time. Don't feel like you have to hurry. We've got, we've still got ten or fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right, good. So the students need collaboration space also, both large areas for multiple classes and smaller areas for study groups and teams. And we heard from, on Tuesday, from the elementary teachers that for the elementary kids, really, they need collaboration space within the classrooms. And for the older kids, middle school and high school, collaboration space beyond the classrooms. Portable classrooms are not a permanent or equitable solution. There's a lot of concern that they take time away from teaching with the just back and forth, but also that there is a security concern. And then we heard, we heard from one of the SROs also about that on Tuesday. Just concerned with the kids being out there in a separate little building. And then library, libraries and media centers are important and they should accommodate multiple uses to best serve the students, the district, and also the community. Flexible and modern buildings best support both teachers and students. And that includes flexible, varied, and modern furniture, which is important for helping the teachers to utilize the space and to give kids the ability to kind of make themselves comfortable. And then the next thing is wellness. And we've, we've really heard a lot of talk through this process so far about wellness. And I think that's true kind of across the boards in the world. But that there really needs to be space, well, the general space needs to promote wellness, but also that there should be some programs, wellness space within the schools. And also just general attributes of the design that, that bring in daylight views and good acoustics, things that make people feel good, that give them a connection to the outdoors, to the weather, to the time of day, and make them feel like they're in a place that they want to be during the day. Playgrounds and play structures should be accessible and inclusive to all students. And this, this has, you know, been a topic amongst the elementary school teachers and principals in the group, that that's not the case everywhere. The play, the toys, the play structures and, and also getting to them is not necessarily accessible to kids in wheelchairs and that have other maybe physical constraints. And then the last common theme is that more resources and support are needed for the English language learners and for after-school programs and summer school programs. So let's go to the next slide. So, so that was kind of the summary of workshop number one. So workshop number two happened on Tuesday. And the goal of, of the workshop on Tuesday was to review and rate criteria for the facility suitability evaluation. So we are evaluating all your schools for their educational suitability, so to meet the goals that you have as a district. And then we're also evaluating them for technical kind of building concerns. That's a separate thing. And just for your information, so I don't forget, we are, we've got site visits scheduled on Monday with our architects and engineers. But for this, for the educators, we're looking to establish a criteria to use as a tool to evaluate the schools for educational suitability. So from the information we gathered in the first workshop, we drafted criteria using those emerging themes that we just talked about. And also the things that have come out in the guiding principles. And then other relevant topics, so topics that are relevant to the design of K-12 facilities these days. And we presented those to the educators in their groups. They rated the importance of those different criteria or topics. And we gave them, we said rate them on a scale from one to ten, ten being the most important, zero being not important. And then we decided that we would drop any of the criteria that only got a zero to a three. And so, and they didn't drop too many, but there were some that they decided didn't apply or maybe weren't applicable to the, you know, elementary schools or the middle schools or the high schools. And then, and that took probably the better part of an hour. And it was great discussions and they really worked together. We, I was at one of the tables, two of my associates were at the other two tables. And we facilitated the conversation and, you know, tried to kind of move things along and, and capture the scoring and the notes. And then we talked, once we got through the rating, we talked about for each of those topics, what the appropriate future scenario was in terms of school facilities. And we got maybe, maybe at most a quarter of the way through that discussion. And so we're going to continue that discussion in the workshop in January. So let's go to the next slide. And this, this just gives you an example. You can't read any of this, but I've got a blow up on the next slide. So this was the list of criteria. I think there were about thirty-five different criteria or topics. And, and these are some of the notes that one of the groups used. Let's go to the next one. So this is a blow up just to give you a better idea. And this is just three of the different criteria or topics. So I'm going to go through, I'll go through one of them, classroom grouping. So we asked, are the core learning spaces grouped in the building to support the education goals? And the discussion was, for the elementary school teachers, these were all from the elementary, that when grade levels are grouped together, the teachers are able to group students, you know, and kind of trade and shift students as needed to best support the students. That that kind of grouping also supports the professional learning community process. And that it helps to keep students of similar age in the same restrooms. That's been a concern that we've heard about through these conversations. And they say that the classroom grouping is really the most important for the upper grades. So that's, that gives you an idea of the, of what we're talking about. Another one would be, I'll jump down to teacher collaboration. So we, you know, we said this is discussing the extent to which the facility supports teacher collaboration. And the teachers said we need coaching rooms, we need, you know, room for parent-teacher conferences, and we need a place to put up our data, you know, that we can put up our data on the walls, that we can move things around, and that we can use those to draw conclusions and, and do good work. So that's just an example of thirty-five things we were talking about. Let's go to the next slide. So like I said, we've got our, our last educator workshop in January. We're hoping to finish that tool so that we can apply it to our evaluation of the different schools.
I just might mention before you leave educator workshop, I think those have been so productive. And we purposely left administration and board members out of those meetings so that our educators could feel like they could speak freely and not have their supervisors or supervisors and anyone else sitting there listening. And I've, I've had a number of teachers talk to me just in passing to how, how productive they felt like those meetings have been. And reading some of the products here that's coming out of it, it's, I think it's producing a lot of really rich information.
Yeah, I think it's been great. And we, you know, we, we give them feedback forms that they fill out at the end. And we'll, we'll pass those on, but we got really good feedback. And I think they have a good rapport with each other, you know, and I think they really, they value the time to sit down in a group and then talk about things. So it's been great. So we've got, I mentioned we have a flurry of community meetings coming up in January. And I think there are, many of them are calendar now. And the big ones, I would say that, that really we're trying to draw as many people as we can to are the, are the elementary school community meetings. And they'll be hosted by you, the board members. And this is a scheduled forum. So we've got, and these are, let me say, these are for anybody in that school boundary, whether you're affiliated with the school or not, but you could go, members of the public can go to anyone that works for them. So if J.R. Smith, you know, the nineteenth works and I live in the midway boundaries, I can go to J.R. Smith on the nineteenth. And they mostly start at six thirty, except for the one at Heber Valley on January twentieth will start at five because there's a board meeting that night. And then we're going to, we're going to wrap up. We really hope to get as much in-person participation as possible, but we will have a virtual one that'll be held on Zoom, January twenty-fifth. So if people can't make it to any of the other dates, they can catch up on, on Zoom. So let's go to the next slide. Oh, yeah, this is good. Zoom out just a little bit. So this is a postcard that we've put together collaborating with Kirsta and Stacy that will advertise these elementary school meetings. And so this is going to go out to, I think, all the.
Every P O box, yes, or every mailbox, sorry.
Yeah, and these will, we're trying to get these out before the end of the month, I think.
Well, next week.
Yeah. Okay, next slide. And then we have really a series of other meetings that we're, I think, still in the works on scheduling. Stacy's been helping us with that. So we've got civic groups that we're going to be visiting with, neighborhood and community groups, trying to schedule a meeting with religious leaders, looking for some ways we can also meet with students and youth groups, and then also developers that are working in the area. Educator workshop number three on January eleventh, the second communities steering committee meeting on January twenty-sixth, and the advisory committee meeting, the second one on January twenty-seventh. So let's go to the next slide. And Lindsay's going to just give us a brief little report about what we're focusing on in terms of communication.
Yeah, I mean, January, as you see, there's a lot going on in January. It's our job to make sure that everybody knows about those community meetings. And so I think in addition to the postcard, we should, we'll submit that information to local municipal calendars. We'll get it out of our social media. I mean, we might even want to consider some, some Kate social to make sure that everybody knows that you can attend one of these meetings. Other information, I'm not sure this is on the slide, but I think that educator information is really interesting to parents. I think they want to see what educators feel like would provide better results for their students and for, for teaching. And so I think we should also post some sort of, some version of those high-level themes from the educator workshop. And I just wanted to see what you all thought of that. But we've, we've heard in our meetings, people want to see results of the process. And so this is one of those results of the process that, that are going to be, that are going to be part of the decision-making. So I think we should do that. We also have heard that we, there's two surveys we need to get on the website. The first is to test those guiding principles. And Christine is still gathering input back from those, on the advisory committee and the steering committee, but I think she's close, close to getting all of that feedback in a way that we have some clear guiding principles that we can take back out to the public and say, are these, are these the high-level principles that you want to use to evaluate our facilities moving forward? So that needs to get on there. And then, and then a student, a student survey. We've heard over and over, let's ask students, let's see what they think and maybe compare that to what the teachers are telling us. They have, they have a voice too. So those are the major things that will happen in January in terms of public engagement.
All right, and then, and you're going to be doing some focus group discussions too?
Yeah, oh, did I not mention focus groups? Yeah. So we, and we do need to schedule a focus group. Stacy and I have been talking about that and we're hoping to do them in December, but those will get pushed back to January. And for those of you that don't remember, we identified three groups of people that we want to bring together. One is our old-time residents. They've been around for a long time. Another group are more current residents, people who have been here for, you know, maybe three to five years or less. And then the other group are people that don't have kids in the system and maybe have never had kids in the system. You know, business owners and, and other folks that, that, that care about the future of the community that don't really have a tie to the district. And so the, the purpose there is to, to get these groups of people and start talking about some of these ideas that are coming out of the educators group that are.
groups, trying to schedule a meeting with religious leaders, looking for some ways we can also meet with students and youth groups, and then also developers that are working in the area. Educator workshop number three on January eleventh, the second community steering committee meeting on January twenty-sixth, and the advisory committee meeting, the second one, on January twenty-seventh. So let's go to the next slide, and Lindsay's going to just give us a brief little report about what we're focusing on in terms of communication.
Yeah, I mean, January, as you see, there's a lot going on in January, and it's our job to make sure that everybody knows about those community meetings. And so I think in addition to the postcard, we should, we'll submit that information to local municipal calendars, we'll get it out over social media. I mean, we might even want to consider some, some Kate social to make sure that everybody knows that you can attend one of these meetings. Other information, I'm not sure if this is on the slide, but I think that educator information is really interesting to parents. I think they want to see what educators feel like would provide better results for their students and for, for teaching. And so I think we should also post some sort of, some version of those high-level themes from the educator workshop, and I just wanted to see what you all thought of that. But we, we've heard in our meetings that people want to see results of the process, and so this is one of those results of the process that, that are going to be, that are going to be part of the decision-making. So I think we should do that. We also have heard that we, there's two surveys we need to get on the, the website. The first is to test those guiding principles, and Christine is still gathering input back from those, on the advisory committee and the, the steering committee, but I think she's close, close to getting all of that feedback in a way that we have some clear guiding principles that we can take back out to the public and say, are these, are these the high-level principles that you want to use to evaluate our facilities moving forward? So that needs to get on there, and then, and then a student, a student survey. We've heard over and over, let's ask students, let's see what they think, and maybe compare that to what the teachers are telling us. They have, they have a voice too. So those are the major things that will happen in January in terms of public engagement.
All right, and then, and you're going to be doing some focus group discussions too?
Yeah, oh, did I not mention focus groups? Yeah. So we, and we do need to schedule a focus group. Stacy and I have been talking about that, and we were hoping to do them in December, but those will get pushed back to January. And for those of you that don't remember, we identified three groups of people that we want to bring together. One is our old-time residents, who've been around for a long time. Another group are more current residents, people who only have been here for, you know, maybe three to five years or less. And then the other group are people that don't have kids in the system, and maybe have never had kids in the system. You know, business owners and, and other folks that, that, that care about the future of the community, but don't really have a tie to the district. And so the, the purpose there is to, to get these groups of people and start talking about some of these ideas that are coming out of the educators group, that are coming out of the steering committee, and get their input, so we understand some of the issues that those kinds of groups might have around these results. Just different perspectives.
All right.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions on that?
Uh huh.
That's all I got.
All right.
Thanks.
Any questions, thoughts?
Guess not.
Doesn't sound like it. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Okay, is that, was that it?
Yeah, that's...
Well, thank you so much for coming up tonight.
Yeah.
That's, we appreciate the effort to be here, and, and I think things are going very well. I continue to hear a lot of positive feedback on this whole process, and just a lot of appreciation just for the process itself. So we, I know the teachers that I've talked to are very, have expressed, they're very impressed with how those meetings are being ran, and how you guys are guiding them through the process, so thank you, and we're, we're headed in the right, the right direction. We've got a big month coming up in January.
We do, get some, get some rest.
Get our rest for a day or two, and then we'll hit it hard.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Okay, we'll now move on to our school site in the Sawmill subdivision. We'll ask Ryan and Brian if they'd like to join us at the table up here. I've got some maps here that I'll pass around. Let's see. I'll leave a map or two right here if it's... So as we look at this, as we look at this map, just to orient ourselves a little bit, if you find Highway forty, this is Highway forty, headed out to, headed out toward Strawberry Storage Board. And we come back, this is Twelfth South over here, and you can see the Sawmill Boulevard that's coming all the way through, and we'll continue on through, and we'll, and we'll come in right here and, and match up with forty. So our school site is in the, is in the center, it's, it's running more east and west, and if you look closely at this, at this footprint, that's, that's an identical footprint of Daniel's Canyon Elementary. It's sitting on ten acres, and where we're at with, with these gentlemen is we've agreed that the, the value of that ten acres, I'm going to say is, is, is at least worth three point five million dollars, and that's simple math, if you want to do the math on that. And they have agreed to sell, to sell us this, this spot for two point five million dollars, effectively donating one million dollars towards the, the school district. Like always, like we do with any site, we will participate in, in the roads that are directly touching our site. So you'll see there is, there are some, you know, one road that is existing, another that still needs to be built. School district has a long history because of the way the county and the city approach road construction here, that, that we, we pay for half of the road that touches our property. So we will, we will work out those details moving forward. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and say that I for one am greatly appreciative of, of Ryan and Brian, and this has been a long process. We've been working on it, as you know, for several months, and we ran into kind of a major snag at one point, and they hung in there with us, and, and they gave up some things, and, and I think they've been, they've been very, very period in their motives to, to have a school site here, and I think they see it as a positive for the subdivision, and they also really like the prospect of, of being a contributor to, to the school district and being good, good neighbors in this community as they've come here to develop. So that's, that's where that stands, and I'll, I'll give you guys a moment to share any thoughts or feelings you have, and then we'll, we'll see if the board has any questions.
We're quiet, we're quiet folk, so we don't need to say much. Happy to answer any questions and discuss anything. Appreciate you guys helping us also as well on your end, kind of took a team to get through the city, so thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
You bet.
Um, just timelines, I've been, so I live across the highway, I've been watching this development from day one, um, watching it go through the city, and I realize the time and effort that it's gone into, so we're appreciative of that, we're appreciative of the, of the discount on the price. On, I just have kind of phased questions in terms of like a timeline. These apartments closest to the elementary school, I mean, it's, it's your development, you, whatever you're doing, you're doing, but I'm just wondering when those are going to be built, when Hidden Creek Lane, or whatever they're going to decide to name that road is going to actually push through to Highway forty just for like congestion issues, and then also the eight-twenty east.
So we've been working with the city for the last month and a half to, currently IHC owns this land, there's another owner that owns this land as well, and this parcel and this parcel recently just went under contract with another developer that is anxious to, to get this through as well. So our game plan right now, barring these other developers pushing on this, is that we're going to bring this road with IHC up across, this says eight-twenty, it's actually more like six-fifty, and it'll connect to Hidden Creek and, and go this way, you know, east.
Towards the school.
Towards the school.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not determined exactly when this is going to come in, there's like four landowners here that all got to come together. So the city is getting, we've had a few meetings thus far with a number of these people, and the city is, I think, a little bit more anxious to push on some of these folks to, to get them to come through. And with these recent parcels coming under contract, and our commitment to get this road in, I think that this will come in much faster. I don't know the exact time, but...
Well, yeah.
But I think that once, yeah, we, we picked up the development from the original developer. So we, I recognize there's been a lot of, lot of drama with the development, and so trying to just advance it as much as we can as early as possible.
Who are the developers right here and right here that are under contract here?
Matt Kelly is the guy's name.
What?
So his name, person Matt Kelly.
Yeah.
And Berxton Partners, Drayler.
Yeah, okay. And then the federal land, where is there, is the Forest Service land up there? I know there was a swap that was involved in there. Okay. What was the snag we did?
The snag was just with the, with the MDA and the...
The MDA. Oh, yeah, because you guys had the MDA and it had to be changed, but the other developers weren't involved.
Yeah, the other, this side of the road, guys didn't want it.
But you guys worked that out, huh?
Yeah, we worked it out.
Everybody's breathing.
We gave up units and gave them grass by their project, and backed the stuff down.
And just for anybody who's watching online, I don't know if this is up online, but Sawmill Boulevard, you guys have it to this point, don't you?
No, it goes all the way to the end.
Or is it all the way in?
Yeah.
And then the Old Mill Village is over here, right?
Yeah, and if you drive out there right now, they're actually putting the roads in right here.
That's what I...
You can see where it touches Highway forty. It's right on the, it's right on the south end of Strawberry Storage there.
That's where it comes out.
That's where it comes out, Highway forty.
Where does it go, clear over to Center for Drug?
It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't, it'll...
And then as far as project phasing, we call this two B, and they just, Gable Rock just paved that road. And then this is what we call phase five, and Heber City just issued us okay to start those three buildings right there, for permit. So we're going to start going vertical there, and then...
On, on one A out here, you may have seen, we have one building with roof on it, and we have a couple other out of the ground, and the others putting foundations in all of those.
And they're multi...
Yeah, these are condos, the purple's apartment, the orange is, is a mix of condo townhome, and the yellow's all townhome.
And what, like, how many stories is that?
Three-story. Yeah, three-level, so no basement, there's slab-on-grade and then, so, yeah, so you have like a two-car garage, and then maybe a little family room, and that goes up to a kitchen and a bedroom, and then up again to either two or three bedrooms up top.
And obviously, Steph, we need to know the demographics of students, the whole nine yards. Okay, but you guys don't have any of the five-story, it's...
Yeah, there's no five-story. It's, three-stories are highest, and then these pink-colored buildings are commercial office. And then purple is three-story apartment, these are three-story condominium towns, and then yellows towns.
And then what's the density, so these are just three-story, like, how many?
They, they rotate, is that correct?
Yeah, this is a little bit of a polar version, but these rotate between condos and towns.
So it'd be like a six, six walk, six walk-up townhomes, and then a ten unit condo, then six walk-up townhomes, then ten unit condo. But, but the condos are identical to what you see being built right there. They're just kind of varying with colors and materials outside, so they don't look all the same.
Where are you guys at?
Provo.
Provo.
Yeah, Warren, Provo, Warren. And then we have a meeting with IHC Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday.
We've had a few already in, we're going to meet with them and the city to...
To try to get that, we're not going. It's on their land.
It's on their land, and I know Russ wants us in.
Yeah.
He's like, come on. I guess my issue is, is this, is this section, because in my mind, that's a huge relief for all of these people, and also if we have kids in all these houses walking here, and this is the only way in to that school, we have to think about walking past. So that's why I was asking about this stretch, because then people, if, depending on where boundaries are, have a secondary access besides, you know...
The city's holding us, so the, the city is not allowing any permits within five hundred feet of this road until that road's in. So it gives us an incentive to get it in. We actually want it in now, if, if the plans were drawn, we would go right now and put the road in. And then our development agreement with the city is they're charging us in our building permits, the cost for the city to put that road in.
Okay.
Can I believe, is that right?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So that's the city...
So that, that actually got worked out, a way to actually make it happen. So whatever that costs...
Yeah, so my comment was, there's these landowners that all have to get together to figure out how they're going to slice that up. The money, you know, we've set aside money, so as soon as the city either strong-arms them, or they come together, then that'll happen.
Perfect.
So, and the city's pretty motivated as well, as you know, they're, they're very anxious to get that in as well.
They need roads.
Other question?
Those were mine. We appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is on the agenda for approval. Once we get, once we get your approval, we'll, we'll put the finishing touches on and get it, get the contract in place, and we'll go from there, so.
Did you hear Ryan, you're Brian, right?
Yeah.
Me and Ryan.
I don't know if there's a need for you to stay for the regular meeting or not, you're welcome to, it'll probably be on about seven o'clock.
These are board presentations.
So about seven, I think.
As long as everybody votes yes, we're good.
You got my number, bring me, I'll put me on speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I don't know, I just think...
Okay, well, I think that concludes our study session. If you want to hit the button over there, Keith, we'll, we'll now move across the hall. We'll invite the board and the district administration to join us across the hall for a dinner that's being provided by some teachers, and then we'll be back here at six-thirty for the regular scheduled meeting. Thank you.